Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. If everyone could stand, if able, for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, forged in hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role?
Councilmember Currents.
Here.
Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milambray.
Here. And we have no recognitions or appointments, so we're gonna move directly to public comment.
Perfect. We did receive emailed public comment from one person, that was Wayne Karples, that was provided to council ahead of the meeting. And then we have four people registered to speak in person after you read your statement. We'll begin with Douglas Manley and then to follow Peter Pontius.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized. And if I do stop you at three minutes, it's not because I'm trying to be rude, it's just to be, you know, fair to everyone. Thank you.
All right, Douglas Manley. All right, we will move on to Peter Pontius.
Good evening. My name is Peter Pontius, and I've lived in Bloomington-Normal since 1981. I specifically lived in the Park Place subdivision in Bloomington since 2001. I've raised two kids in Park Place, and because I wanted to stay in Park Place, I recently invested over $50,000 in getting new siding and windows on my house. Park Place is a residential neighborhood on the city line between Bloomington and Normal. It's a residential neighborhood with a grocery store that just spent millions remodeling their store, a pizza place, a discount store, and a local dentist office, a senior living apartment complex, and a large apartment complex with young families raising children, and several churches. On the way here, there's also White Oak Park, which tonight has Bloomington's Knocker's football team starting practice. And the reason for my appearing in front of the council is to discuss the liquor license that's on the consent agenda for Galaxy Liquor and Smokes. If you're a parent, would you feel safe sending your kids to pick up dinner at Little Caesar's Pizza, which is going to be in the same building as Galaxy Liquor? If you're a parent, will you feel safe sending your kids to Jewel to pick up a gallon of milk for dinner? The store that is on the agenda is not something that is needed. It duplicates what is already there and has been there for decades in the form of Jewel Osko. When I reviewed the application that I submitted a FOIA request for the liquor license application, there was numerous inaccuracies and several discrepancies that I found in the application. I discussed those at the last month's Liquor Commission meeting in front of Mayor Bobbey. Basically, it's not a needed thing, it's not wanted, it's not wished for, and it's not welcomed. So I encourage you as a council to decline the application as the liquor commissioner has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
And next up, we'll have Crystal Haeckraft and then Desha Cobb to follow.
Hi, good evening. My name is Crystal Haeckraft. I've been a resident since 1989 in the area. I grew up just north of Hevy and Park Place, and I bought my very first home in Park Place neighborhood about 11 years ago. I'm a hairdresser, and so I work evenings, sometimes till eight, sometimes nine o'clock at night. And if I need to run into the grocery store, that's when I go. No one's there, it's the perfect time, it's quiet. But as a female, my head's already on a swivel just for that fact. Even in my own safe neighborhood, I'm on guard of who's around me, what's going on. I feel like the addition of a liquor store right there would increase. There have been reports that were reported at last month's meeting of increased crime, and then around those areas. That worries me. Public drunkenness, since it is a residential area, if there are residents going there and sitting outside, they're right next to Jewel Osko also, like that is worrisome. Litter is something that I think about, and my neighbor Desha also. It's not only around Jewel Osko in our neighborhood, around White Oak Park where we go and walk around the lake, and families and kids, and that's also a concern. On my street, my property backs right up to Turnberry, and my neighbors, a couple of my neighbors and myself also already currently have issues with noise violations with Turnberry, which has led to weekly, if not daily, phone calls to the police to report noise violations. And that was also confirmed by a police officer last month. So for all of those reasons, I am on board with not getting that. I think something else would be a much better fit. Like Pete said, it is not welcome, it is not wanted. I also have to wonder the effect of having a liquor store right next to some low-income housing that for people that already have little or no access to certain types of help that they may need if they already suffer with issues involving alcohol, whether it's the individual or the family. I just don't think that that's a good fit all the way around. So I encourage you to also deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and next up, Desha Cobb, and then to follow, we are last speaker is Serena Fish.
Hi, my name is Desha Cobb. I have not been a resident as long as they have. I came to the Bloomington-Normal area as a college student. I'm a two-time alumni for ISU. And I am from the south side of Chicago, so I still feel like I'm a city girl trapped in a small town, a smaller town. I am just concerned about the traffic and the associated behaviors that these type of businesses can attract to an area. This is a residential community. I know it's been cited as being a business or commercial, but we truly are blessed to have Jewel Osko right there in a Dollar General, and that I think we're well-suited there for if we wanted to purchase, for those wanting to purchase packaged alcohol, you can do that at Jewel's. They also sell tobacco products. A smoke shop tends to, to me, for the area, has the potential to increase alcohol-related crimes. It is situated directly across the street from a senior complex area. I work in senior care as a healthcare provider. We work very hard to keep seniors aging in place. So to place them directly across the street from a business that could potentially attract people who don't have the healthiest life behaviors is concerning. It also sits neighbors, a mixed-generation complex where there are a lot of kids. And if you're familiar, I know you guys are familiar with Cottage. So we think about the potential for drunk driving, and there's not a lot of wiggle room for the kids. And those of us who walk our pets frequent the park there. So I'm just utterly concerned. I wanted to share the other thing. Growing up in the inner city, certainly I grew up in communities where there are liquor stores on every other corner. I'm very proud to say that the church that I went to, we voted our neighborhood dry because of the associated behaviors. So I think that when communities speak about this type of businesses that are entering into their areas, hopefully it beckons the right amount of attention. I have a new driver, and I'll say he just got his first car a week ago. He has nowhere to go. Him and his friends are hanging out at Target parking lot, Myers parking lot. So it would be nice to think about a business that targets teens and gives them a safer place to hang out, or even a gym, because we have to drive from the west side to the east side of town to participate in indoor gyms or workout facilities. So certainly just ask you guys to consider no and support of the mayor's recommendation against granting the liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last up, we have Serena Fish.
Hello, I'm Serena Fish. I live on the west side of Bloomington. I'm head of West Side Neighbors. I'm on the police review board. Part of Miller Park Neighbors. A couple of different things. One, I completely agree with the ladies that just spoke. We had a similar problem in our neighborhood with a store that wanted to move in at Morris and Wood. And we also had a problem at Wood and Eric's. Thanks to the city, we finally took care of the problems. They were not allowed to open, because once one of these stores opens, then they want gaming, then they want to do vapor, then they want to do, and all of a sudden, and it's a residential neighborhood, please say no. Next thing is, thank you so much to Mr. Jurgens and whoever else that got rid of Tent City along the trail. Thank you to Idot, who came through and cleaned up all the graffiti that was left behind. It helps. Three, they are having major problems downtown Bloomington. I know the mayor's been out talking to people, and I have said it before and I'll say it again. You need to clean up your house before you move forward with a lot of stuff. We're literally getting people coming to our store saying they're afraid to go downtown now. Because of what's going on with homeless, with vagrants. People actually just walk, it's almost like they're not afraid anymore to be afraid. Last. On the agenda tonight, I'm hurrying, Mayor. On the agenda tonight is the consultants. I don't believe in consultants, however, in this one, I do. Because as a citizen, as a leader, as a part of different commissions, sometimes trying to deal with the city is not easy. So anyone that can come in, get rid of the riffraff, tone it down, get much more things working together, we would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, but I am going to go ahead and pull item 7K from the consent agenda to discuss separately. So is there anything else that anybody wants to?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7K.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, second, my councilmember Ward.
Plakers?
Okay, we're doing plakers. Okay, the consent agenda without item 7K passes, and there are no names to announce. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item 7K. And item 7K was pulled because, you know, from the consent agenda, because on Friday afternoon, the clerk department received a memorandum from the applicant addressed to the council and containing additional information and argument from the applicant. However, because the city council acts in an administrative capacity when determining whether to approve or deny the liquor commission's recommendation, new information received outside the hearing should not be considered by the council. The liquor commission hearing was held on this matter on July 9th. The applicant had an opportunity to present evidence and argument at the hearing. Eight Bloomington residents also appeared at the hearing to object to the license. The minutes from this meeting summarize the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and are contained in today's council packet. and are contained in today's council packet. The commission made its recommendation based on the facts and arguments presented at the hearing, and they are also included in the packet. So tonight, the council may, if it deems appropriate, remand the matter to the liquor commission for additional proceedings or proceed with the liquor commission's recommendation to deny the application. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I don't know who you were recognizing.
Oh, okay. Sorry. She spoke first, so I just, but do you?
I would like to move that we deny the license in accord with the liquor commission's recommendation.
Okay, that sounds good. Are there, I know we can't get into the details of things, but so is everybody ready to vote?
Yes. I was just going to clarify. So council member Bullen, your mic, we had too many mics on, so we actually couldn't hear you live and what you said. I think that you were making the same motion to deny. Is that correct?
I was making the same motion, but Alderman Ward made it more clear.
Okay.
So if I make a second.
So I'll put you in a second. That sounds great. Just wanted to clarify for the record. Thank you.
So excuse me, just to clarify, a yes vote is in to deny.
Yes, a yes vote is to approve the liquor commission's recommendation, which would be denying. Yes. Okay, should we get your clickers? Okay, so the item passes. There are no nays to announce. And we are going to move on to item 8A on the regular agenda. A consideration and action on a resolution authorizing waiving formal bidding requirements and approving an agreement with Iverson Consulting Group through December 20th, 2024, as requested by the administration department. And I'm going to turn it over to city manager Jurgens for initial remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have a few quick remarks. Continuous improvement's been a topic that this council's discussed for at least the last couple of years in different forums, different work sessions, retreats, those types of things. And so if you could go to the next slide, tonight, we're excited to bring forward what will be the start of a formal program for continuous improvement within the city. Just at a very high level, when we talk about continuous improvement, and there are a lot of different definitions, how we as staff have talked about it is talking about the process of evaluating and enhancing the efficiency, effectiveness and quality of services that we provide to the public. I want to stress, this isn't about our employees. Our employees work very hard. They do a great job. This is about our processes and how we can improve those processes and make them easier and more efficient. If you go to the next slide, former city manager Tim Gleason had put some initiatives into place. And tonight, this is really about taking those initiatives to the next level. I would say we had a fragmented approach as a city. Former city manager Gleason had asked Josh Hansen, our benefit specialist who had some experience in this, to kind of lead this initiative, and he continues to do so. He's received quite a bit of training, has gotten his green belt. I've received some training. Others in the city have received some training. But what we really need to do, we believe, is formalize our program and formalize this process. So tonight, we're bringing forward a contract with a consultant, Ted Iverson. Josh Hansen and I have had several meetings with this individual who's come highly recommended. We are both extremely impressed with him. We're very excited with what we think he can do for the city. And so tonight, we're bringing forward that contract. This will basically be the start of our program. It will include not only training and guidance for us as city staff, but actually identifying and implementing two to three changes by the end of 2024. So we hope to have the fruits of this contract shown very quickly. And if you go to the next slide, we will actually kick this program off yet this month. So we're making arrangements, if the council approves this tonight, to get the consultant here on the ground in Bloomington. He will start meeting with directors, start working with different departments, helping to identify different areas that we can address. The contract will take us through the end of the year, maybe a little bit longer, at which point we will report on the progress. And then we will decide what that next phase looks like for our program and what those next steps are. So again, we're very excited about this and excited to see what this will bring for the city and happy to answer any questions.
Is that you in the picture?
It is not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by council member Bullen, second by council member Ward? No? Okay, Crumpler. Awesome. Are there any questions, discussion? No? Okay. All right. Well, we are going with, in the spirit of this, we're going with efficiency today. So that's awesome. Okay, let's go to the clickers. Okay, the item passes and there are no nays to announce. Thank you. And we're going to move on to the city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And if you could go to the next slide. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit, as I try to at every meeting, about the homeless situation that we're addressing in the community. Today, I had a meeting with representatives from Home Sweet Home Ministries and Eastview Church regarding the encampment on the parking lot. I know it's only August, but we're already starting to get prepared for the winter. In talking with representatives from Eastview and Home Sweet Home, we are going to try and have something in place before the winter starts, which means we will actually, we're actually starting to work on a plan to wind down the encampment. And we'll look at having other, you know, shelters that potentially through some emergency action. I will come back and ask the council for some action in the future, but looking at getting other proper shelter for the individuals. So want to report, and I'll have more in the future, but want to report that we are actively working on starting to close that parking lot down as a tent encampment and looking at what other proper shelter we can get for those individuals, as well as other services for those individuals. Next slide. Last week, the library had a grand opening, maybe it's been two weeks now, but they had a grand opening for the library. It's now complete. We're very excited about that. I know a lot of members of the council were able to attend. I just wanted to take a moment tonight and highlight Jeannie Hamilton, the library director. I know she's technically an employee of the library board, but she works very closely with city staff. She comes to our staff meetings. But she has really, to undertake this project has really been a lot. I know she's had a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of long hours. But if you go in that library, almost every inch of it was touched. If it was not new, it was touched. And it took a lot of coordination by Jeannie and her staff's part. And I just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize all the effort she has done. And if you have not had a chance to go in the library yet, I encourage you to do so. Not only are there, you know, it's not your grandpa's library. This is completely different. Yes, there are books, but there's also rooms to do podcasts. There's also rooms for teens to have activities. There's a space for innovators to create with 3D printing. I mean, the list just goes on and on. There are community rooms. It's just going to be a great facility for this community and encourage you to check it out. Next slide. And if I butcher this, I'm going to ask senior deputy city manager Tyus to step in and help me. But back in the fall of 2023, the council approved a new initiative because we were having so much trouble hiring firefighters. And so the initiative was to separate the paramedic requirement. And because of that, we are currently onboarding a lot of firefighters. So we've got eight that are now through, that we've hired, that are now through all of their training, and another four that are going to be finishing up their paramedic training on the field. Flip that. Four that are already hired, eight that are finishing up their field requirements on the field, but are through all the other training. So very quickly, we will onboarded 12 new firefighters and paramedics, which is very exciting for the city. Again, just last year, we weren't getting any applicants, so we appreciate the council considering and taking those changes, helping us with those changes. Next slide. Another nice thing for the city, for the 13th consecutive year, the finance department received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This gets scored by three different GFOA reviewers. They keep increasing the technical requirements. There are all kinds of criteria to get this award. But just wanted to highlight with the council, and I know everybody appreciates the hard work that Scott Rathbun and his team does in finance. But they shared that they received this award again for the 13th time today and wanted to share that with the council, the community. And then my final update, just an interesting connection and an exciting connection. One of our employees, Andre Hershey, his niece, he works in our public works department, a longtime employee in the public works department. His niece, Elisa Johnson, was in the Olympics, competed in the Olympics, made the finals in the 100 meter hurdles. I think she may have clipped a hurdle. So she ended up placing seventh, but she was highly favored to actually win a medal at the Olympics. And again, is the niece of one of our public works employees. So just wanted to share that unique connection with everybody tonight, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. That, it's a great way to end your report with that. I actually ran into Andre at a store and he spent about 45 minutes talking about his niece because he was so excited. It's a very, very exciting moment. And if you know anything about the 100 meter hurdles, it's unforgiving. I mean, if you miss one hurdle and that's it, you know, it's over. But definitely, you know, wonderful to kind of have that sort of Bloomington connection to someone who was in the Olympics, which is not the first time, actually. We've had a volleyball player who played in the Olympics twice, Ogan Anamani, who, in China, I think, in Greece as well. So fantastic. Yeah, so I think, you know, just some, just a couple of words that I wanted to mention. But I, you know, throughout Jeff's report and what you're seeing here, I think you can see, you know, just the staff's dedication and, you know, commitment and ingenuity, creativity, you know, at play with a lot of the things that we do. Except in the area of finance, you know, who are not too creative there, which is great. And also wanted to highlight, I had a, just kind of a chance to look at some of the numbers on the dashboard for buildbloomington.com. So I, and I can see that we have, you know, 983 units that are in progress. 440 of those are single family, 48 are two-family, and then 495 are multi-family. But we also have a number of permits that have been issued and other folks who have applied for permits and also plans that have been approved. So, you know, we are, I know we talk about housing as a crisis, but I think the staff is doing the best that they can to move things forward along with the developers in the community. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to council members, if they have anything to add. Council member Hendricks?
Yeah, I was just going to give a quick shout out to Jan Lancaster and her team at The Bistro, who held another successful and even larger pride event, excuse me, downtown. I think they had like 10,000 people. It's one of the largest, if not the largest event we do downtown. And I know I saw Alder Person Kearns there as well. So just wanted to give a shout out to them. It truly shows the inclusive community that we live in.
There is. Okay, council member Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the parks and rec for the touch up at Rolling Brook Park. The pickleball court needed some help and there was a tattered flag that was kind of hanging there and thank you for taking care of that as well.
So this pickleball course, are you getting a lot of use? Anybody else? Council member Monty?
Just a couple of thank yous as well, starting with Public Works. You know, you guys have just been doing such an amazing job, really getting to some of the streets that have been struggling for quite some time. And I'm hearing such positive things from people receiving pictures and things like that. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing to accelerate that. And then secondly, I just wanted to thank Josh and Jeff for really pursuing, building a culture of continuous improvement, which is going to make things so much better for staff and also for those they serve. So grateful and so proud to see where this journey takes us. Thank you.
Awesome. I don't see anybody else. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And then council member Ward? No?
I'll second.
Okay, council member Hendricks. I mean, your hand was going there, so I was trying to get ahead of you. Okay, all those in favor by saying aye? Aye, okay, we are adjourned. See you next Monday.
Yeah, I know, I know.